Sounds like a great gift. Good evening. The Board of Education meeting is now called to order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Lohr, can you say this in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr.
You're welcome.
Okay, I, next is public comment, but I do not see any for public comment this evening, so we'll head into our action items. So we have the consent grouping approval of minutes of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. A consent grouping item to be removed. Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion that the reading of the minutes be made and the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Okay, I have a motion in support. Mr. Van Magen?
Aye.
Mrs. Lohr?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Mrs. Adams says aye. Motion carries. Okay, and that concludes action items for this evening. So we will head into our presentation, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Andre.
Thank you, Madam President. My pleasure to introduce our district director of athletics, Mr. Shad Spilsky, to share an athletic, district athletics update with the board. Mr. Spilsky, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'm timing myself.
Mary, start the clock.
We're like forty-five before you even got there. There we go.
Well, I see you brought Mr. Cross with you as well, so he's been instructed to tap you. You should have seen.
Yes, yes. Thanks for having us tonight. I know this is something I look forward to, to start off the school year. You know, I think you're gonna see a lot of good stuff this time in athletics and Rich and everyone. We kind of share some visions of what we're gonna have this year, so.
Are you put down there? All right.
So, as usual, we're looking at our accomplishments and some booster club updates and then our goals for this upcoming school year. And we have had some changes in our athletic department this year. Rich got a new secretary that just started this, this fall, Paula Hall. But as you can see, one of the nice things that we've done, I think, in our district is we have some consistency. Austin Green came on to ask for somebody, Smith and Ethan Goddard sent to the athletic department and super motivated to do some amazing things. And that's great management, it is, because that's what this is really, really about. So we're super excited that he's continuing to grow over at LHS. Can have a lot more influence on the ninth graders, which will be really, really good as a coach in the building, but also kind of getting those kids over there, we're gonna be able to really make some momentum and some strides in some of our athletic department stuff going on. And then obviously, Lisa, who is our athletics secretary, is kind of the glue that keeps everything together for us. But we had the twenty-four, twenty-five review at Oakdale High School. For the first time in eleven years, we added this work. We had girls across last week and Kent Meister was our head coach, did an amazing job. I think that twenty-five or twenty-six girls played girls across last year. They won their first game against Lake Fenton, which is probably one of the coolest celebrations I've seen in a long, long time. The girls, you know, didn't really know what they were doing to the second season, but as they get around, they became more competitive and indeed became fun. Crowds were very good, you know, just a lot of, a lot of compliments for our community of adding that support to our athletics. We had an SBL championship on the team wrestling, first time since we've been in the merge that our wrestling team won the SBL championship. That's traditionally been Davidson the last ten years, but Joe has done a great job, Coach Wood, in winning that. Sarah Henry was our second tennis player, won the championship in the tennis singles last year. And then Bella, Sarah, which I didn't put up here, but she's a state qualifier. She led the league last year in our bowling. She was number one on average in our bowling topic area, the league for bowling last year. I mean, she's like one ninety, which is pretty phenomenal, which is state qualifier. As you can see last year, I was looking back at previous slides of previous years. Last year was probably one of our highest state qualifying group of kids. You can see that she, Isabella, qualified in bowling, Billy Drake did best in soccer, qualified in track, she was all of wrestling. I'm handling wrestling, Chris Rogers in track, Nestor in track, and Rayland qualified in wrestling too. So this is a really big year, I think, for, this is very individual sports, we have a lot of qualifications. We hosted district boys' basketball, so Coach Stilwell was his first year with us last year as a head coach. We're gonna host boys' basketball, had a great, great turnout. We were pretty good at the event where you could see some way of asshole. And then we hosted district baseball, we'll talk a little bit about that. Coach Joe did a great job of doing that deal ready, and we'll talk a little bit about what that looked like for us. And then obviously, our A-CAP mentoring, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our A-CAP training, because there has been comments from you guys over the last year about some things on how are we evaluating that work? And then kind of things we did this last year that parents, people ahead, and some comments our coaches have from that. So I'll turn it over to Richard.
Thank you. So we're reviewing some of our accomplishments this year from middle school level. We did host the G M S L, the cross-country meet at CFI again, since it's been six years. Hosted it since I've been here, so six years. Really show off our facilities, really kind of highlight what our kids are doing, get people to the campus. It was a pretty big event for our, our kids. As you can see, we have seventeen teams in the middle school league. We have a five hundred runners in the four races, we have two varsity races, two JV races, and there are a thousand spectators that come and watch. So it's a pretty big undertaking, but we're doing it quite a while, and it's kind of, it kind of runs itself. Large credit going to Kent against the John McCready, who they take time off of work, they're out there. Kent against the zero for not me, Mo's the course against the putting green. So they're obviously passionate, and the course is great. It's not the same course every, every year, they tweak it, they change it. The varsity cross-country programs involve, I think, some meat and concessions, they gave them some money, fundraised that way. So it's a great event, they have a chance to come out. It's in, in mid-October, so it's a pretty, pretty big event, it's good that it's good all the way around. We did see increased participation across most sports this year, Shad will kind of go over those numbers for the end presentation. Also seen an increased number of kids trying out for sports that are fun to make. It's good to see an increased interest in sports and athletics. And those early kind of posts over here, we saw a pretty big dip in participation across all sports. People are kind of rebounding nicely from that, so it's nice to see at the middle school level. Last couple years, we've been a great job of implementing that six, twelve vision across all sports. Shad's been a great job hiring varsity coaches that really embrace that. They align with all the sub-varsity programs being involved, middle schools doing. A good example is next Tuesday and Wednesday, our middle school fall staff, that's done about two hours of varsity practice or non-varsity practice, and then two hours of fall game for defensive practice, and then kind of squeeze some stuff up. We're gonna get on the weight board, Austin Green and Eric Henry are putting together packets for the coaches. So that's not just football, it's just an example of it. Pretty much all of our programs, track and cross-country, they do a great job working together. Volleyball is a great job, so we see it across all sports. It's a big, big reason why we're starting to see an increased level of success at the high school and the varsity level, because we're starting to kind of have that same kind of visions being implemented across six, twelve, three. A big part too, where we're trying to do six, twelve, is implementing some summer programming. We offered summer weight with the crew three P M, high school weight room this summer for middle school students that are on the varsity ball staff. We have a ton of our, been around in all the summers, see a ton of our programs offering camps. Kent Meister did girls' basketball, Jim did multiple football camps, volleyball put on multiple camps this summer. So again, keep the kids involved, we're kind of showing the middle school level what that kind of year-round, you know, kind of embracing that process and the grind and becoming active, so that's what we need to see. And we remain part of the G M S L with a foreseeable future. That was kind of up near a few years ago, we've done a good job of kind of balancing out the schedules, finding competitive balance, while not playing the same schools three or four times in a season.
All right. We don't know of hardship, we are with finance and orientation, that's something that Superintendent, I don't really talk a lot or anything about. The group that helps us out athletically, that's called right now is the Booster Club. As you can see, last year is unreal. They, they give that, they run the concessions for four programs and then teams come and ask money for them throughout the entire year. They gave over thirty-two thousand dollars to athletic teams, both middle school and high school last year. Next week, they'll be giving, they signed a five-year deal with the district to help fund the weight room equipment. There are going to be five years, so five thousand dollars, the people's have to pay off in the next year or two. But they'll be writing a check next Tuesday for fifteen thousand dollars to the district as part of their first installment. I thought of us, you are, our, redo our weight room. You can see that they gave these scholarships, five hundred dollars to athletes, and they are consuming the available three-month activity year scholarship for a thousand dollars per year. It's pretty amazing thing to do. So, with that being said, we have a field day, striking day, this coming Saturday, that is a big fundraiser with sponsorships. We actually only felt, I think, a couple hundred dollars short of how much money they took in last year of sponsorship this year. They did, they did twenty, thirty thousand dollars in sponsorship last year, so we were right there again. But if you are interested, you have family that's in town, your kids are in town, come to the high school, to the CFI, to the stadium, the competitor field. One to three, a lot of fun, all our athletic teams are there. Little kids, you can see our kids in their, in their apparel and see them doing events and playing games and that kind of stuff. There's bounce houses, there's quarter ice, which is, and there's a lot of different quarters as well. It's kind of our kickoff every year to the athletic season. Matt McKinner's done a great job promoting it on the district website, Facebook, so Matt, thank you so much for that. And that's up to general, are showing up a lot of sponsorship for these people, just like every organization. There's a few people doing a lot of the work, so anything that they can do to get that up and going is great, so. But it's a great day, fun day, supposed to be ninety degrees out, so it's here. Rich, that will be.
You guys are running the cooling station?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The foam bar, you're a DJ, it's, it's a good time.
Yeah.
I want to just take a second to thank a lot of people right here. This is something that Superintendent, one of your guys talked a lot about. I want to thank the border station, or their community, the Booster Club, the theater fund. But over the last eighteen months, we have done about, I mean, over five hundred thousand dollars worth of things to athletics. So a couple things that pop up here, we've been in the gym, we have, you know, a new sound system, which sounds great. Last spring, the last fall, we did the tennis court resurfacing. We put a new tennis hitting wall in the tennis courts, the soccer.
We refer to it as the Great Wall.
The Great Wall. The soccer field, we put up a new scoreboard, which was donated by Camaro, I think, at the, one of our, it was a gym board meeting, they were here, and we did a check presentation with them. We did the sound system up at the soccer field, we've put a lot of money into the maintenance and people, soccer field ten over there. We're still working on it, it's a work in progress right now, because we're trying to level it out. Obviously, the new weight room and equipment, Booster Club is a big piece of that, the district kind of funded everything upfront, the pictures that happened. And you haven't seen it yet, I know most of you, I saw it at the graduation, the CFI last year, phenomenal. I think it's kind of the pride of everything we've done in the last ten years.
Well, before you move on, Chad, I think the board should also know that, you know, while Shad works through a very good job of giving proper credit where it's due, these two individual administrators are, this is a working man's district. They were literally putting equipment together. Rich has been cleaning weights this summer, physically cleaning weights. Shad was a big part of actually physically assembling the weight room racks. So as much as they are able to lead and get a lot of help from the booster groups and various, you know, community entities, they're also leading by example and doing the field hands-on work of making these spaces better for our kids and our staff. So thank you to you two for your leadership there.
Obviously, the, you know, part of the bottom is the new outdoor space, the rest room, which is top-notch. You know, all the programs that come in are for these that are state contenders every year. They said they're, they're amazed at what we have right now at LHS. The field maintenance of the varsity softball fields, with the work with Brian and Bader, we had a deal with Dura Edge for the next four years. When they came out and re-did, re-rated all their softball and varsity baseball fields last spring, they put on maintenance then for the next four years. That's why we're able to host districts and it looks amazing now. If you got to be open to Zimmer, Rich did a great job in designing and getting the new gym floor, we've done the work at Zimmer. The space is very great now, it is the best gym in the district right now, and the way that the floor is, how beautiful it is, with the logo, the L, the middle, and it's just pretty amazing, you know.
Rich scrubs it on his hands and knees. I want to thank Rich for that.
I mean, something like.
Black sun, black sun.
You know, Rich's vision for the weight room, so there's a weight room over at the middle school right now that will be utilized. And obviously, Kent Lindzel did a lot of work of trying to incorporate a lot of new PE courses. And Rich is taking that and running a bit over to the middle school's work, and we'll offer some introductory stuff we do at the high school for middle school kids that's up in the main grade. It's competitive stuff, lifetime stuff, smart stuff at the high school, that's going to change what we do, which I think is going to increase our work with the young kids to get back into athletics. We ordered brandy volleyball standards in that, in that system, which will be used this first year in, in September. We, this is the tenth year of the turf, believe it or not, since we've had the turf for ten years. And it's in amazing shape for ten years, we're using, we're very careful about how many people we allow on, but it does need some upkeep, so we have a contractor company come in and reached them to put pellets back into the, into the turf, because it's years long, and it goes off. Some of the games we've had in the number, we're showing the ice off of that, the pellets go with it. So they've come out here, they analyzed it, and said that you guys need this, and this, and this, and so they're going to be here in September to kind of redo that piece and put the pellets and something to refresh it, which we, it's a safe to be for, for a lot of our kids, so. But again, thank you to everybody who has helped to do those things, it's pretty amazing, the support that we get in this community to do some pretty amazing stuff. So focused for twenty-five, twenty-six, now that we've gone on these things, our vision is compete, it's time to compete. So we're gonna talk a little bit about our SBL update, football at Division Two, middle school programming, it's a big cap stuff, strength division, middle, this and that. So, as you can see, our offerings have to change a lot, as I said, for nine, twelve, we've added girls' cross, which adds another girls' sport, you know, keeping us more in line with Title IX opportunities with our high school athletes. We usually do SBL, my colleagues for some reason decided that I should be the executive director again for another year, and I thank them a lot for that.
You did such a great job.
All right, yeah, two years, yeah. We hosted an SBL coaching clinic in June. It's our, it was kind of a, well-attended, definitely about two hundred and fifty coaches that attended the event throughout the entire league. We brought in the V Four Foundation, which was a A D of Alphabeta. His son committed suicide, was a Wayne State player, committed suicide, destruction, and he came and spoke to all our coaching staff. Really, really good inspirational stuff, which you attest to that. Pretty amazing, pretty good stuff, things that we have to keep in mind with our student athletes, we don't necessarily always know what's going on with them. And so, really good for our coaches, and we had thirty-five, forty coaches, you can have those home high school at this event. We presented the annual coaching banquet. Matt and Kim got to attend our Scholar Athlete of the Year award, that's probably one of the coolest events, I think, that our league does, where male and female athletes, scholar athlete of each school, and the teacher of the year is recognized as a key favorite in their honor. Kim has been very fortunate, she's the first parent, had both of her kids be honored at that event over the last couple of years. So it's a really cool event to honor some pretty high-shooting kids, and it's amazing, not only our kids, but to see what other kids are doing, and it's, it's unbelievable. We talked about honors and all the coaching, I mean, it's, it's that kind of, Sarah is the best, the best, and we're right there with a lot of our community schools. So the SBL is reconfiguring. For football, we don't necessarily have SBL, but we are playing in Division Two because of our declining enrollment. We are the second-largest Division Two school now in the state of Michigan, heritage from second, that's right above us, but we'll be playing in Division Two this year. So what's that means is when we get to playoffs, it'll look different, we won't have to play Davidson, week nine, week ten, or Graham Lane, or Clark's like that. We will be playing some schools that are more closer to our enrollment, the Flexions, the Vidends, the Second Heritage of the World, you know, Carden's even there. But some of those areas, schools in the Flint area that are a little bit closer to our enrollment number. So we're pretty excited, our coaches are pretty excited about that, because it changes what playoffs look like for, for our football team. It allows us to play a very tough season, or play a very tough schedule throughout the entire season, knowing that that's going to pay off, and then we're going to be prepared for the playoffs in Division Two. One of the things our coaches talked about at last year's banquet and coaching clinic is looking at dividing, laying down like football, but for all of our team sports to move it south within the SBL, so we have done that. Our coaches were a big force in that because of time out of school, depending on the trap time, and then it tends to home events. You know, it's very hard choosing a night, and our girls go to Mount Pleasant for basketball. Very few of our kids travel to Mount Pleasant on Tuesdays. So playing Davidson and Cartman and Graham Lane and Powers Tuesdays in front of our kids, that's much more manageable for our families, travel safe, safer a little for our student athletes. We're gonna have some more double headers on Friday nights with our girls and boys, which will bring in more fans who are, who are on the event, or swimmers at their events. So trying to really create that atmosphere of just a great athletic high school competition feel when you go to those events. So those are kind of reasons why we're doing that, so. All of our other individual sports are staying that way, just because not every school offers swim, or not every school offers hockey, and that, so. So the individual kind of sports are still an all-day thing, and we don't play everybody, so it's, you know, our, our senior, our league secretary kind of handles that stuff, so that we're kind of mixing that, so. But we're super excited about that, our coaches are super excited about that, because it will allow parents and kids to see a lot more stuff. Those are our athletes.
Things that we're excited for, for this upcoming school year, obviously, with realignment, we're gonna have seven and eight waders in the building, which is good for a number of reasons. We need particularly being able to form those connections, those relationships with all of our student athletes. Last year, I found myself having to go over RW, and a lot of times it was for athletic consequence, and always good stuff, so it's nice to have them in the building. You can, we'll get aside, have conversations in the hallway, things you can't do, we can have seven players on the other side of town, so we can afford that. Pretty excited about it. Something I'm really excited about, we're returning approximately twenty or thirty middle school coaches from last year, we're returning ten of twelve coaches for this fall, so we're having some consistency across the years. The middle school level, a lot of turnover with coaches, you get parents to coach once your child was in eighth grade, you know, who's his middle school coach? So we've been able to retain a ton of coaches this year across pretty much all sports, depending on how baseball, softball shakes out, could be somewhere in the, in the lower to mid twenties. So really excited about having that consistency across all sports. Zimmer's in for it, Shad said, I'm, I'm big on undersell over the never mammoth floor. These pictures don't do it justice. If you get in there and see it, you know, it's, you know, it kind of speaks for itself. Get in there, it's, so get a chance to come check it out, stop by, it's, it is, I guess, it looks really, really good. It's nice going from not really having any branding in there at all, to having, you know, again, arguably popular, nice gym floor in, in the district. So it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be, you know, a point of pride, and real things, the people, it seems kind of silly, but having a nice football field to play on, having a nice baseball and softball field, and a nice gym, kids will want to come out with this facility to train. Upgrade your facilities is probably the best way you can draw kids to your, whether it's from inside or outside of the.
The weight room too.
Absolutely, absolutely. But like I said, the pictures don't do it justice, we go in there, I mean, we came in, we walked the guys, and very explicit about how we want it to look, and we came in and I was like, that's literally exactly what we want. That doesn't always happen, right? And I'm like, oh, the guy, like, hey, I get it, this is a job for you, I don't want it the same the next decade, so it needs to be exactly like this. So, and it ended awesome, yeah, credit, credit to the company. I mean, weight room, we took a lot of the old racks, it's all really good shade, bars, plates, and repurposed them to a computer lab at Zimmer. We were one-to-one, so computer labs are kind of becoming like non-necessities, so. And a little bit of our removal being gone a little bit, we have a couple more spaces that are freed up, so we took a computer lab and acquired it in the building. We have some leftover flooring, from the high school, we took the floor, the racks, plates, bars. A little bit of an issue where they sat in that trailer from February, from December to July, and we got, it was Monday, the seventh of July, we opened it up and we were like, I repeat it, at four P M, we all set, we set the weight, so. And I know who's alongside my football coach, and obviously, you know, my inner Pete head is, I love everything about this weight room, but I want kids to want to use it too, because the floor is awesome, you know, our, our facility maintenance staff did a great job painting it and managing the paint job. Then the weight room, we get some signage and stuff coming to for branding and stuff. But if you touch a weight, you walk out with a bag of Cheetos, so the kids are going to want to use it, so. We did soaking, soaking weights in a solution of, 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 Brian Battery's not here, but he got me a pallet of vinegar, and a fifty-gallon solution of vinegar and water, and soaked it forty-eight hours, probably worth some rust, we'll print some off, and then. Little W E forty, full-time consuming, but we're about halfway through it. Before and after, well, I'll send you some pictures, before and after is pretty, pretty, you know, kind of amazing, but it's, it's pretty clear. So we do have after school, we're looking to plan for the fall, some kind of work that's going to look like, they just want to turn a bunch of seven, eighth graders loose, having zero strength and conditioning experience, so this is going to be very restructured. Nice thing is we have twenty-plus attorney coaches who like to trust, who will, I can trust that, hey, here's the vision, here's the things you do, do it. So I feel really good about that, but there's going to need to be some structure, it's going to be basically a scaled-down version of what we do in the high school. With team builder app and things like that. Ideally, we, at twenty-six, twenty-seven, we want to get a section of weight training, athletic enhancement, possibly some of those like intro, for the semester, seventh grade level, and maybe a full year elective at the eighth grade level. A part of that too is, as a athletic director, our coaches, our counselors, add them, we all feel it self, kids about how awesome this is, the weights, and how important this is to student athletes, to get in there and admit yourself better. It's not, the kids will want to do it, they're not going to put it on there, you know, they're going to sign up for the classes they want in the fall. And then, yeah, we're working to get in conjunction with all of our middle level administrators and the secondary levels, including the event supervision. But again, if you get a chance, be free to stop by, check out either of those spaces, but the gym, like I said, is, is really nice, can't say it enough.
Okay, so again, we continue to use our A-CAP, Athletic Coaches Advisory Team to help with new coaches. Coaches who are struggling, coaches who are in the varsity sport. And you can see, we're kind of working them out of the job, because if you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, you can see that we're, to Rich's point, we are retaining coaches, which is awesome. That was the goal of this program, is to keep coaches here, to help them grow, and now it's refining some of the things that they do, and so we'll continue to stretch our mentors to help them grow. You know, coming back to the same mentors that we had last year, I think they did a great job. One of the things you guys have talked about all the time is, you know, where's the thing, so Sarah Taylor has created surveys, and they send out to our coaches on what they need to help them grow, and they gave feedback from our coaches. So that's one of our data points that we're now looking at, we're starting to really start to implement this fall of how do the coaches get better, what do they need? You'll see some things that are, who, and that, and then where are our mentor coaches? So we got some coaches who've been in the program for two years, did it help them and help them grow? We got some coaches who went in for a year, and what did it do, or what didn't do, or what do they need for some kind of year? So that's some data points that we're looking at currently with the coaches that we just had, and then for this last couple of weeks. Our pillars for, for athletics still, increase student athletic participation with season number ten minute, create positive experience. As I said, our goal this year, our vision is to be, not only in high school, but in the middle school level. If that is our goal, we are going to compete at every level. I think we've got to a point where our coaches want that, and now are using words like that with our student athletes. Curriculum, we use, continue to use the corporate coaching curriculum, last year we used the Coach and Inspire book. A lot of our mentors use that with their individual coaching, the words in the book, sort of those guys. The book that we are using this year is to be, so that's the book that we are using, so we're really in line with what our vision is, with what we're actually teaching, and what our coaches are actually reading. So I'm really excited about what that's going to look like for this year. Our strength and conditioning, I've gone over a whole lot, but continues to be a pride of, you know, emphasis for us at the high school. The summer was a little bit difficult with the construction that was going on, thanks to, you know, to Julia and her team for allowing us to be in the weight room for the days that we had lifting, because high school didn't shut down. Thanks to Brian, getting a fire watch person there so our kids could be in there, and sort of coaching staff, we're, you know, continuing to take that on. But I think with the adjustments to our PE curriculum, adding a lot of sections, as Kevin has mentioned before, I think it's the only program in high school to add more sections this year from previous last year, so we have more kids who are signing up for athletic stuff, which is super exciting. And then, as I said, our weight room, I don't know if there's another facility that I've been to that, you know, has matched that. We, Kevin and I is going down to, to Detroit, because BSN did our forum, and one of us is going to speak about how it's impacted not only our athletes, but it's also impacted our females, and we've had more female athletes doing this now. We have a female athletic enhancement class just by itself, and talking about if we could go and speak to other schools around the state of Michigan, and how designing a weight room so that everybody feels welcome, you know, can do something for them, and what tips we can give there, salespeople within BSN to sell that message to schools. It's pretty phenomenal what we've done with that weight room, and it's a space that every kid, I should believe, feels a little bit unsafe. So our numbers, you know, which we look every year, it's crazy to think the class of twenty thirty-one is the current seventh graders. If we say that's twenty thirty-one, it blows my mind, but you can see, as Rich talked about it, at the middle school level, the numbers continue to increase because, as I said, there's a six to seventh, eighth graders, more offerings that they can give. We're still kind of saying in that thirty range, you have in the. We're still kind of sagging in that thirty range, you have in the current juniors, when, so the class of twenty-seven, they were the current sixth graders, we hope it happens. That experience, I truly believe, impacted a lot of our athletic stuff. We have kids who just didn't get re-engaged. And so we're kind of going off that, not that it's an excuse, that's just the reality of where I look at these numbers. You can see that their number is, you know, probably one of the lowest when you look at where they are, thirty percent, there's other programs who weren't at thirty percent until they got to their senior year. So things that we got to encourage to get them in, you can see their numbers aren't as big either, not as many as we see. So our coaches are challenged, we are challenged, athletic directors, to figure out how do you get those kids re-engaged, right? So our numbers are still right around thirty, obviously our goal is always to be closer to fifty percent, that's a big, big jump. Should be what we had a year after year, creating spaces that they have over at Zemmer, I think it's going to help, changing curriculum with the P is going to help too. You can see our athletic, um, scholarly jet scholar athletes had a great increase last year, so it's, as kids have had a cumulative period of their current higher, nine to twelve. So you can see the class of last year did really, really well, especially that, that, that freshman class. We have SBL scholar athletes, so that's three point three, and you have it been a varsity player for two years. You can see that we're kind of sick, going, well, you can see that that current senior class right now jumped three times, we had a lot of kids who ended up playing sports for multiple years, which was awesome. Female sport athletes, you can see our big focus is multi-sport athletes. I still, you know, look at that class of twenty twenty-nine and seventy percent, that's pretty, pretty remarkable number. Being in the forties there makes us super happy, if you're close to about thirty percent is a good thing. Same thing for, for females, so we're in the, you know, the mid thirties, uh, low forties, so continuing to push and give opportunity, I think, like I said, adding a girl support this last year, I think is the way to help. For some kids just to find a place, if something they want to do. But I'm super excited that our numbers are not going down necessarily, that we are continuing to stay where we are and trying to increase a little bit. So with that, Matt, thirty minutes.
Slow play.
That's your best night ever.
Yes. So.
Also, GM Pat could have made.
A lot, a lot of good information.
Didn't scrimp on that.
Questions? There's a lot.
I, I for one can say that I really do think that this is really becoming a remarkable sports program. Like I am really impressed on how well the A-CAP has been handing out, like that's a little bit amazing. Um, and I just think that you took a vision and you made it into what wonderful outcome that it is. I mean, our kids couldn't have it any better really for the sports aspect. And I am impressed, like I didn't think I saw the list of things that have been done for sports. I'm, that's impressive, I'm super glad that we have been able to do all those improvements, um, make all those changes. I mean, I'm excited for the kids.
I think the one thing that's important to keep in mind there is I think part of those things were bottom pieces. Part of our athletic budget, part of our operations, part of who's like, it was, it's a, it's a thing of diligence to do the things that we need to do in our community. And I think that's, everybody can say that they had a piece, it's not just one organization or it's just not this school. I think I love that there's, everybody has a connection, everybody has an ironing fire, you know, there's a ownership there. I think that's super important in our community of being able to say that I was a part of that group and I helped fundraise and they were able to give X amount of dollars. Or I was, you know, able to do this, or I was a part of the leader fund, we did bank with our kids, honored kids, or, you know, I voted yes on a bond, there's a lot of these things to happen. And I, it's, it's unreal, the community has supported and contributed to those things over the last six months.
It is impressive. And just re-sizing us, moving us where we need to be, I, I think it's fantastic. I really look forward to this one presentation every year, because every year I can see such leaps involved in our dedication to athletics for our students.
Well, the richest point about it is it beats another facility improvement. That is the stark reality of attracting the modern day student athlete to participate. You know, those of us that competed in high school thirty, thirty-five years ago, the uniforms, the field, the weight facilities, all that stuff was pretty basic. And, but it was also at a time where, you know, students, there was less distraction, you know, there was more participation. And you were going to play regardless of how cool the field looked, or how fancy your uniform were, whether your name was embroidered on your travel bag or not. And just the way that the modern family and travel organizations have really taken over youth athletics. What they've done unfortunately for both schools, I, I fortunately is kind of raised the bar of what we're providing for kids. You know, I look back at Fed baseball, I remember the football experiences and it was a interchangeable two-way jersey and, you know, uh, reusable bag for your stuff, and we handed it back at the end of the year and first our team were traveling, it was our made-up. And then I started raising my own kids and, you know, I had to take out some mortgage on my house to pay for the trail for my daughter's soccer experience. We were all in Texas and Florida and all of them. And then we'd play a team from Michigan in the finals and we were in Las Vegas, which was very irritating, because I'm like, you're from Northville, but that's cheaper to go to Vegas. Uh, it is, it is true, and to look at the, you know, when I first started here, I can honestly say that our athletic facilities were nothing short of maybe the worst in the world fundamentally at the time. They, they were, were not good in, uh, in that fifteen-year period to see where we're at now and, and Chad is a thousand percent right. That, that multiple room, rest center in the high school, that's a weight room, our football facility, baseball, softball, track, tennis, I'm really envy of many, many of our newers, I think, so. That's a point of pride that in that short period of time, you've gone from kind of the butter the joke to kind of the envy of our youth, so that's something that we should all be proud of.
I'm just actually proud of these guys, because, I mean, they had to take it, run with it, they loved it so much, they, they, they worked more hours than they get paid for, I can guarantee it.
Well, let's not do that.
I mean, when we love your job, it's really not a job, right? And that's what I see in these guys, right? They, they just, they, they, they breathe it, they want it to be a nice facility.
Well, I'm going to steal that phrase, inner meathead.
Well, Rich, your excitement tonight, the passion that you guys showed, it was like no other year, and you can tell, Chad's always excited. Rich was like very excited, so you're, I can tell you're very proud of Zemmer.
Rich smiled tonight.
And I.
Rich smiled a lot tonight.
Your, your dedication to just making sure that weight room is good for those students, it's appreciative. What both of you couldn't do without?
How many, how many middle schools have a weight room, dedicated space? I, I, I can't think of many, so that is just.
Thank the voters, yes, voting for the bond, I mean, obviously, I mean, you've, you've said it all.
If everything that we said we were going to do was meaningful, and better than, I think you could have even imagined, and it's not like, you know, thinking about the PSCs going up like, with, you know, the lockers doing that game in high school, I mean, there's still work that's being done. Trick or drive, I mean, people are going to get me as your bet, right? But I think to your point, it is, like, we, we deliver, and we are continuing to deliver every single day. Yep, to your point, I appreciate those comments. You have athletics out there that's exciting to show the world every day. We want to make sure that kids have an opportunity to have a positive experience, that's one of our, one of our pillars, right? And to be competitive at the same time, that's one of our pillars that we have. I mean, your, our vision is being lived out of.
And your coaches wanting to, your coaches.
So how did the, uh, athletic clearance go, you know, that we've had the first three days of it, are we getting a lot of participation?
Yeah, so, you know, thanks to Matt, you know, we put out a phone blast last weekend, we had over fifty kids go to the high school last, on Monday. So we put out a phone blast last week, last Thursday, Friday. No, we're, yeah, we're, I bet you we're probably a hundred kids ahead of where we want to be right now. So, I mean, Monday's still going to be a huge rush because that's when everybody realizes that practice starts on Monday.
And we don't have that bracelet, and you're not going to participate.
Right, and I, I, that, that concept, I mean, I've had multiple people talk about that, like, that makes it so much easier on the coaches, just giving that bracelet. Every kid, talking about the six, twelve vision, every kid knows they don't have a bracelet, they have to practice. Our conference about, and it's something that we, you know, put in the place seventy years ago that I think is really, like, parents don't, they don't have a bracelet, I mean, they're telling their kids the same thing.
They just can't.
And like, you're saying, you're saying those in yesterday.
My son doesn't have a Monday morning.
Oh, Monday morning, and so I was talking about, and he knew, he knew, like, this is, I have to.
And he was going to wear it, and I said, I don't want you to break it, because some things don't break, so I've got it in a very safe place, not going to be back till Monday. But, um, I just think that it's fantastic that there's that much participation already, just the first three days of the clearance. And Lisa was awesome, I mean, even though she's working in a very weird space and, you know, we were talking about how excited we all are for the new building and how it's going to be. And we talked about maps, and she said she's going to make sure that every kid has a map. To make sure that they know where they're going on the first day of school. But I just am so grateful to you guys for promoting the weightlifting program and of course the football team and everybody else. And Julia, thank you so much for allowing those kids that access over the summer, because as a parent of a child who utilized that weightlifting time and could not be late and was always fifteen minutes early. And it was so great, so when I went to go pick them up, there were tons of kids in the parking lot, so you could see that there was a lot of kids there. I mean, based on the day, there were maybe not as many because of vacations or whatever, but it was great to see that many kids being able to take part in that and to continue that physical activity during the summer when some of the kids, you know, they want to sit in front of a TV and veg and play Xbox. Us giving them that opportunity to continue their athletic prowess and, you know, their strength and conditioning, it was really nice. So thank you as a parent, and thank you as, you know, board member for everything that you and your team have done, and you guys as well. Because I could not speak higher of the weight program, the weightlifting program. And I don't know if it's the fact that my son has just grown a foot in the last year it seems, but to see his, to see how he has changed physically, and I know that so much of it is due to his weight and conditioning and the football program and just everything that we're all doing here. And, you know, health and fitness and I just love it, it's a great message. And as a parent, I thank you, and as a board member, I even more thank you, so.
Anything else?
Yeah, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, that leads us to board member communications. Any communications tonight?
There is, that's good.
Yes.
We, uh, we usually have a lot of kids actually.
Come this, we'll appear to many schools, booth.
I was just going to say, I knew we were having a booth or something, what are we getting out there, Matt?
Mr. McKendrick will be manning it twenty-four seven. He's, uh, very excited to hand out the material.
What kind of materials are going to be hand mailed, Matt?
We'll have our, uh, new newsletter.
Okay.
That, uh, will be mailed out to the entire, um, area, area, we'll have some extras we'll have there too to hand out to our with the walk by. Talk to us and ask questions, so.
Do you know where your booth is going to be?
I've been told it's next to the stage.
It is.
Just going to say this should look good, is that?
Bring in our L C S stress balls.
Stress ball?
No.
Just kidding. Hi, any other topics tonight? I headed over to Superintendent Wondery.
Thank you, Madam President, this will respond to date as we near the completion of the summer work and in anticipation of staff returning, uh, to us, August nineteenth and twentieth. We have our inspections in the fourteen, fifteen for occupancy. We anticipate as of today that we are on track to meet all those deadlines, but, you know, always anticipating the ups with, with inspection type of work. So we've got contingency plans, we have a teacher workday scheduled for the nineteenth. Where all buildings will be occupied by staff, so should there be any delay in our ability to occupy the facilities, we have some contingency backup plans for the staffs that will be impacted. Particularly in Schickler and High School where some major projects are currently underway. We are going to finally and formally announce that our staff welcome back will be at the Center for Innovation this year. We had thought of potentially making the high school, as is always the site for the welcome back breakfast and, and opening remarks. Although we may be granted occupancy on the nineteenth, we have been told that there will be fire alarm testing the entire day. Not that that's an environment to have a, a six-hour. So, uh, we're going to be making some adjustments as it relates to that. So opening day, seven o'clock, seven AM breakfast on August twentieth, all board members are invited to ten. And then seven thirty, do not miss superintendent's marks. We only have a three and a half hour window slated for that. Come with your seat cushion, ADD medication. Pillow. And then we have the staffs that are returning to their respective buildings for, I don't know, the twentieth. But as of right now, we are tracking the right direction to be on time. Building on Friday at my school again today, and Julia assures me, despite what I saw, we'll be ready. She's the expert, she's the expert, so I defer to her and send all the nasty messages, it's not ready.
I will not come back if it's not ready.
That phone number has been disconnected. Uh, we're doing, we're doing well, so.
And just a message to all of our community to, um, invite you to demonstrate patience and understanding in the first days of school, as we have a lot of new people in a lot of new places. So things like pickup and drop-off will be bumping, transportation routes are getting hired out. You will always have technology, lags and staff booths. We've got folks teaching different buildings for the first time in many years, a lot of equipment and personal and, you know, items will move over the summer by our staff and others. So just plead our community to be gracious and patient with our staff, with our students, to do our best in the first days of school, and those experience, we're all involved. Thank you in advance for that patience, especially in the first months.
Yes.
And with that, I yield that to the gentleman, I have you, Madam President.
Thank you, Superintendent Wondery.
Motion here.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Van Magnit.
Aye.
Mr. Blah.
Aye.
Mr. Alita.
Aye.
Mr. Cutman says aye. Meeting is.